The meeting to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Felton?
Present.
Counselor Canelis?
Present.
Counselor Palumba?
Present.
Counselor Picchirelli?
Present.
Counselor Woodland?
Present.
Counselor Baze?
Present.
Counselor Donato?
Present.
Counselor Felkoff?
Present.
President Sedaris?
Present. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The next item is public forum. Typically, this is a sign-up public forum. Nobody has signed up, but if anybody would like to speak, you know the rules. You didn't sign up.
I apologize.
I shouldn't let you speak.
Hi, everyone. My name is Halaudia Thomas. I'm here to talk about what's next, Watertown. As recently noted by Mike Driscoll, our town manager, Watertown is in good financial shape thanks to strong fiscal management and a growing tax base. This year, we have a budget surplus. I'm here to make a serious recommendation on how to use some of this money to benefit our entire community. The fiscal year 2020 budget is close to $150 million. Where were we in 2010? That budget was about $95 million. In 10 years, our town budget has gone up over 50 percent. In the last five-plus years, the environmental pressures in Watertown have really cranked up, given commercial development, housing production, changing population demographics, traffic, transportation, school building plans, and more. These pressures are reflected in an extremely intense schedule of never-ending council, committee, and community meetings, and some very hot discussions, priority differences, and frayed nerves. Many feel overwhelmed, overburdened, and somewhat angered and displaced by all this rapid change in growth. In January 2020, we will be entering our fourth Home Rule Charter review. This review occurs every 10 years and is critical to ensuring that our form of government, its structure, policies, and procedures is efficient and responsive to the changing needs and times. How is our form of government working? What needs tweaking? What policies or procedures have we outgrown? How do we accurately plan for the next 10 years without objective, expert advice? Do we want to risk planning for the wrong future? My recommendation: Let's contract with the Collins Center for Public Management, which is dedicated to improving efficiency, effectiveness, governance, and accountability at all levels of government. We need objective comparative analysis and understanding of best practices and seasoned expertise to guide our considerations as we review our charter. The town council is elected to do its due diligence and serve this community. I'm asking the council to request a portion of the budget surplus and to designate an appropriation of money in their upcoming budget priorities so that the Collins Center can be hired to help our community's future for the next decade. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
Good evening, Council. Pete Erasian, co-founder of Watertown Overcoming Addiction. Just wanted to speak to the, what's coming up later in the agenda about the recreational use, adult-use marijuana. Can you remember how long ago it was when they first came to us and we were here speaking about it then? But exactly what we were talking, what I was saying, you know, there's no question they're going to come for rec. There's no question. That's their plan. And, you know, now we're here, they aren't even open, and they're already requesting recreation, recreational use. So, you know, when we were here before, it was, no, 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 medical, you know. We just want to get medicine in people's hands. And now, you know, they're up for recreation. They haven't even been open. We don't know what kind of business they run. We don't know, you know, exactly how everything's going to work down there as far as traffic, as far as people. So, I just wanted, you know, I wanted to come to say that this was pretty much their plan all along, and I'm not sure why we need to fast-track them without even having them open their, they haven't even opened their doors yet. And once again, like I said before, I'm not, I'm not against marijuana. I'm, you know, anyone of age, want to go do whatever you want to do, that's fine. Recreational, you know, just like anything else, will lead to having these highest strains, higher THC content, trickling down to younger and younger people. And I think keeping it as-is, medical for now, you know, we'll at least be able to see what kind of business they run, see if everything goes smoothly, and then we can bring it up. I know that, that train, you know, is gone. Marijuana's legal. So, I just thought that it was a little, I guess, disingenuous, the way they came off the last time, you know, talking about just medical, and now, you know, doors aren't even open, and they want, you know, they want rec. So, that was just my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item, which is examination of minutes. And the first item is the examination of minutes of September 24th. Can I get a motion on the minutes of the 24th?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we adopt the minutes of September 24th as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Can I get a motion on the minutes of October 8th?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we adopt the minutes of October 8th as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. President's report, I didn't list anything. I just have one item that I think is more than an announcement. I think it's, last night, the school committee met at the Lowell School, which is probably the first time that we've taken the school committee on the road. And I think it was very well-attended. I appreciate the schools being able to host a school committee as the town's representative on the school committee. It was very pleasing to see the number of people that came that wouldn't probably come to this chamber. So, I just wanted to say that it was very well-attended, and I think it's a good thing that the school committee is doing as we move forward. We'll be meeting at all the other different schools as well. The next item is proclamations. And we have a proclamation tonight. It's an acceptance of a proclamation honoring Thelma Carter on her 100th birthday. Then I'm going to ask Vice President Picchirelli to read this proclamation, which was presented to her on her 100th birthday.
Proclamation celebrating Thelma Carter on her 100th birthday. Whereas, Thelma Berta Bawel was born on October 8th, 1918, to Harold and Josephine Bawel in Maple Ridge, British Columbia, Canada, and had four siblings, Dorothy, Perry, Douglas, and Patricia. And whereas, on December 6, 1941, Thelma moved to New York the day before the attack on Pearl Harbor to live with her sister Dorothy. And whereas, during the war, Thelma met a young Navy aviator, Wilbert Carter, who she married, and they then settled in Cambridge and raised three children, Clinton, Victoria, and Lisa. And whereas, Thelma later accompanied her husband, who became an archaeologist and anthropologist at Harvard with the assistance of the G.I. Bill, and assisted him at the Burnick site near Barrow, Alaska, cleaning artifacts, receiving praise for her work. And whereas, Ms. Carter's career allowed her to participate in the early days of venture capital at Palmer Service Corporation from the 1970s until her retirement at age 85. And whereas, Thelma remained active, learning to play tennis when she was 60 and continuing to play when she was 90, often playing people less than half her age. And whereas, Ms. Carter became an American citizen in her 70s. And whereas, Thelma moved from Lexington to join her community in Watertown in 2017. Therefore, be it resolved that the town council of the city known as the Town of Watertown hereby extends its warmest wishes to Thelma Carter on the celebration of her 100th birthday.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to accept the proclamation?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We've been doing quite a few of these lately, and that's a good thing. So, congratulations. Next item is public hearing, and I'd like to get a motion to suspend, to move up item 7C.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. 7C is a public hearing and vote on a grant of location petition from N-Star Electric Company, doing business as EverSource, to install nine feet of conduit northwesterly from Pole 1646, approximately 220 feet southwest of Waltham Street, to provide underground electric service to 385 Pleasant Street. And typically, I would recognize the EverSource representative, but I'm going to recognize the Superintendent of Public Works, Mr. Jerry Mee.
Mr. President, Counselors, thank you. As you know, the Public Works Department normally approves prior to the town council issuing a grant of location, and we usually investigate the underground utilities, the footage, and so on, and make sure it's correct. Tonight, I'm standing here tonight asking that my approval for this location for 385 Pleasant Street be withdrawn, as there's conditions that we've just recently learned about, is a developer has installed the conduit in the ground without a permit and without approval and prior to the town council's grant to location. Therefore, I would like to have that approval, my approval. Respectfully request that my approval be withdrawn and allow the developer to come in and address the permit situation, the fines, and EverSource can address their own situations with the developer and how they proceed. And then I would expect EverSource to come back at a later date.
Thank you. Since this is a request from the superintendent, we will be granting that request and moving on to the next item.
Thank you.
Thank you. 7A is a public hearing and vote on a proposed amendment to the fiscal year 2020 budget. Mr. Tom Tracy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the town council, tonight's proposed fiscal year 20 budget amendment has been advertised in the local paper as required by the town charter. The proposed budget amendment, if adopted, will increase the fiscal year 20 general fund budget by $2,91,194, resulting in both the fiscal year 20 projected revenues and expenditures totaling $149,849,194. One of the revenue items causing the fiscal year 20 budget increase is an additional projected new growth of $1,356,653. This amount is higher than the original projected new growth figure of $3.5 million when the fiscal year 2020 budget was adopted in June. Earl Smith, Chairman of the Board of Assessors, will be submitting tomorrow to the Department of Revenue for certification of new growth for fiscal year 20 in the amount of $4,856,653. The additional $1.3 million in new growth is attributed to $720,000 of personal property over last year, 65 Grove's new office being transformed to a lab for roughly $400,000 in new growth, and numerous other smaller projects estimated at $180,000. Another revenue item that increasing the fiscal year 20 budget is additional state aid of $113,041. When the fiscal year 20 budget for the town was adopted in June, the state had not finalized their fiscal year 20 budget. In your handoff of tonight's budget hearing included the final fiscal year 2020 cherry sheets from the Mass Department of Revenue showing this increase. The final revenue item that is increasing the 20 budget is the transfer from collective bargaining stabilization fund in the amount of $621,500 to replenish the fiscal year 2020 Town Council Reserve account related to the two police union contracts for fiscal year 17 through fiscal year 19. On the expenditure side, we have a couple of minor adjustments to state assessments, also from the fiscal year 20 cherry sheets, that would decrease expenditures by $26,525. Another expenditure item is an appropriation of $500,000 to the capital project stabilization fund in order to continue in the annual transfer of $500,000 through fiscal year 2024 to support capital projects. The final item is an increase to the Town Council Reserve account in the amount of $1,617,719. This accounts for both revenues and expenditures from the fiscal year 20 budget to increase by $2,91,194. Mr. President, since this is a public hearing, I won't entertain any questions that the town council may have after you close the public, public hearing portion. However, before you do so, please be advised that since the town has not received, not yet received certification from the Department of Revenue on the projected new growth of $4,856,000 for fiscal year 20, I respectfully request that the town council table the actual vote on the fiscal year 20 budget amendment until the next town council meeting scheduled for November 12, 2019.
This is a public hearing. Is there any member of the public that wishes to be heard on this? Yes.
I'm sure Tom has all the numbers straight. I would just like to say that the Collins Center would charge approximately $50,000 for helping us with the town charter. To me, that's very short money in terms of getting it straight for the next 10 years. Thank you so much.
Anyone else from the general public wish to be heard? Seeing none, I close the public hearing, and I'm curious why I wasn't told this.
Mr. President, I thought, I thought the manager told you before.
No. I'm a little surprised at your request this evening.
Okay. I'm sorry.
That's why the puzzle met on my face.
All right. Every few, every few years from the Department of Revenue, we go through a revalue. And when we go into a revalue, sometimes the certification of the new growth figure takes a little bit more time during a revalue year. And just like we did, I think it was in '14, but don't quote me on the exact year, we did something very similar to this. And I do apologize to the council. I thought, I thought the manager had indicated that to you, Mr. President.
Had he done so, we would have sent out a memo, or this was a public hearing, and I'm a little, I'm just, people saw a look on my face, and I'm just surprised. Mr. Rich, what would be the appropriate motion to move this to the second, to the next meeting?
Mr. President, having closed the public hearing at this point, I think you would just continue the matter for deliberation and a final vote at, at the next meeting?
Okay. We will continue this. Do we need a motion to that, or I can just?
I would recommend that you take a motion to that effect.
Okay. Take, motion to table this amendment until the next meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. The next item is public hearing and vote on an ordinance amending the town auditor's salary. I'm going to do my best to get through this. I apologize. My cold will not go away. Back in April, we reviewed the town auditor's performance, and it was reported out here back in April. And overall, the evaluation had grades of meets expectations and exceeds expectations, were the more of the comments and boxes that were checked off by the council. To me, that's a very good to excellent job performance of the town auditor. Subsequent to that, there was a subcommittee meeting of the personnel committee, and I presented several scenarios to the committee. The first scenario was the manager's salary adjustments that he does for department heads, and some of them were outside of just a COLA, and they were performance reviews, performance bonuses. We also did some internal and external comparisons of salaries within the town and salaries of Tom's like position in other communities. And what, what I presented to the committee was the fact that this position needed to have some, a little more salary that goes with it because of the number of items that the town auditor is involved in, which include now new items, which were the CPC, which is the Community Preservation Committee, and their budget. He is on the school building committee now, and it takes, is in charge of all of their items that have to do with budgets. So, he's added many things to his sal, to his job. So, because we are beyond, a municipal employee can only get, go back one year for a salary increase. So, what I've proposed in this public, in this ordinance is, and by the way, the charter requires the town auditor's salary to be done by ordinance at a public hearing. That's why we're doing this this evening. So, what I've proposed, because we can't give this, Mr. Tracy, an increase in 2018, what I'm proposing is a, an increase of, it's 3.5 percent, but it's a 2 percent COLA and a 1 and 1/2 percent performance bonus, and then effective fiscal, effective 7-1-17, and then a proposed effective 7-1-18 at 3.5 percent, which is again, a 2 percent COLA and a 1 and 1/2 performance bonus. Performance is partly performance, but it's also a matter of us bringing the salary. If we were to go out and try to hire someone, this kind of salary is probably still not going to be enough for someone to take on this many roles that Mr. Tracy takes on for this community. Overall, as I said, Mr. Tracy's performance was very good to excellent, and not too many people can do that. So, I'm very appreciative of his efforts, and I respectfully request that the council favorably consider what's on the table in front of them this evening. Since this is a public hearing, I now open it up to the general public for questions or comments. Please.
I just want to say, as the Chair of the CPC, Tom has been extremely helpful. I mean, this is a whole new bailiwick for this town in explaining things to me and explaining things to the committee. And he has a terrific sense of humor and cuts through all the forest and puts a clear path on how to get something done. So, I'm truly appreciative of that. Thank you.
Anyone else from the general public? I now close the public hearing and open it up, ask the council for a motion, please.
Mr. President, I make motion that we adopt the ordinance, giving the town auditor no raise for fiscal year 18, and in fiscal year 19, increasing his salary to $115,544 plus a service award payment in the amount of $3,775.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion or comments? Counselor Felton?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I make, my main comment is that I would also be happy, since there were discussion about bringing this position up to, you know, with treasurer-collector, didn't really make sense for this person to be making less than that position, to raise it to the same level. I don't know if I make that as, I guess, make that as a friendly amendment that I would be in favor of.
Well, we really can't, we can't do that here.
Oh, okay.
This is just for this particular salary. If we're going to look at that, we have to make a new referral to do that.
That's why last meeting I was asking.
Sorry.
Well, okay. So, I'm on record saying that I support this increase. Thank you.
Are there any other comments? Can I get a roll call, please?
Counselor Canelis?
Yes.
Counselor Palumba?
Yes.
Counselor Picchirelli?
Yes.
Counselor Woodland?
Yes.
Counselor Baze?
Yes.
Counselor Donato?
Yes.
Counselor Felkoff?
Yes.
Counselor Felton?
Yes.
President Sedaris?
Yes, thank you. The next item, when we will be bringing at a future council meeting, the appropriate transfers to the appropriate accounts to fund this increase. Number eight is motions, orders, and resolutions. And 8A is a first reading and referral to the Planning Board for public hearing, a request to amend the zoning map of Watertown by removing the parcels of land located at 70, 78, 84 to 86, and 88 Galen Street from the limited business district into the I-2, industrial 2 zoning district in keeping with the budding properties. Mr. McGoon, by the way, the town manager is not here this evening. He's attending the International City Managers Conference in Nashville. And Mr. McGoon, the Assistant Town Manager, Planning Director, is here in his place. Mr. McGoon.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you'll recall, this is something that was before the council previously. Unfortunately, for a variety of reasons, we did not advertise the public hearing in time for the Planning Board within the allotted 65 days from the referral by the council. We have slotted that in for the next Planning Board meeting, so it just needs to be re-referred. Again, since it was referred previously, hopefully that's not an issue. And would ask for the council's consideration of re-refer that to the Planning Board for public hearing.
Thank you. Can I get a motion? So moved. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. 8B is a resolution authorizing a transfer of funds in the amount of $80,000 from the fiscal year 2020 debt retirement short-term interest account to the fiscal year 2020 transfer to Capital Projects School Department account in order to move forward with the replacement of the middle school classroom laminate floors. I'll first recognize Mr. McGoon and then we have Laurie Cable, the Director of Public Buildings here for the presentation. Mr. McGoon.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. As you'll recall, in the fiscal year 2020 budget message, the manager indicated his intention to bring forward a number of capital items from the fiscal year 2020 capital improvement program. A number of these have moved forward and consistent with the town's priorities were not deferring maintenance or recognizing the cost of capital equipment and facilities, infrastructure. So, as a follow-up to that and enclosed in the package was materials from Laurie Cable, Director of Public Buildings, to replace the middle school classroom laminate floors. Floors in all the classrooms on the first floor were installed as a laminate floating floor and they've had some serious problems with those. So, consistent with that recommendation, I'd bring forward Laurie Cable, again, Director of Public Facilities, to give you some more details in terms of the project.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President, counselors. We have seen this project a few times and there's actually been a couple of different phases in this project, so I wanted to just review a little bit of where we're at. You know, a few years ago, about five years ago, we put flooring down that seemed to be a floating floor and what it's doing is it's kind of separating, it's having gaps in between. The slides that I showed you when we did the capital plan a few months ago showed you some of those gaps. We did the hallways on both the first floor and the second floor back in the summer of 2018. Yes, 2018. In 2000, in the summer of this past year, we started doing the classrooms on the top floor, which is the second floor. We've done half of those classrooms over the summer and we'll be doing the other half over December break. This project is to start doing the classrooms on the first floor. So, what we're hoping to do is, originally, we brought forth a request with our capital plan, $452,000, and we did go out to bid and this bid did come in just under $80,000. This is a good price. It is one of the better prices that we've had in all three projects and it is, the winning bid is someone that did the hallways. So, we're happy with their work. And then, the third, the last project will be to do the first floor and that will happen next summer. That will complete all of the flooring that happens in the schools. Again, this has been a safety issue because it is separating and those gaps are, the floor is actually moving as staff and students are walking on it. And in the capital plan, this was number three out of the 19 projects that the school district put forward. So, we are asking for your support to move forward with this.
Thank you. Can I get a motion on the resolution?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the transfer of funds of $80,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, questions? Counselor Donato.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I did see, I know you just stated it, but it was also in your comments that we've worked with this contractor in the past and you've been pleased with their work, but I was really surprised at how much lower their bid was than the other vendors. So, but we don't have any concerns or reservations about that?
No, we don't. What we did is, this floor actually has less square footage than the top floor. We're not really sure exactly where exactly, but the classrooms are smaller. We're also doing one less classroom because we had done flooring back in 2018 in one classroom and that is pretty good. So, there was a good amount of square footage that we're not doing on this floor, so that is one of the main reasons. This vendor that we're also working with is very competitive and has done really good business with us, so I think they put their best foot forward also.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Can I get a roll call, please?
Counselor Palumbo?
Yes.
Counselor Pichorelli?
Yes.
Counselor Woodland?
Yes.
Counselor Baze?
Yes.
Counselor Donato?
Yes.
Counselor Felkoff?
Yes.
Counselor Feltner?
Yes.
Counselor Canelis?
Yes.
President Sedaris?
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number nine is committee reports and 9A is a committee on economic development and planning report regarding the NSAJO Holdings, Inc., operating as an adult-use marijuana establishment at 23 Elm Street. Counselor Woodland.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee convened on Monday, October 7, 2019, at 7:00 PM in the Lewis P. Andrews Upper Conference Room. President and myself, Chair Lisa Felton, Vice Chair and Counsel Vincent Pichorelli, Secretary, Staff President was Steve McGoon, Assistant Town Manager and Director of Community Development and Planning, also President and Counsel Anthony Donato and Anthony Palumbo, Representatives of NSAJO Holdings and members of the public, which can be found on Attachment A, which is the sign-in sheet. The purpose of the meeting was consideration of the request from NSAJO Holdings Incorporated, currently approved for operation of a registered marijuana dispensary at 23 Elm Street to operate as an adult-use marijuana establishment at the same location. Ms. McGoon stated that since the previous meeting on July 16, 2019, NSAJO Holdings held a community meeting on August 21, as required by law, prior to submitting an adult-use license application to the Cannabis Control Commission, or CCC. The law also requires an executed host community agreement, or HCA, prior to submitting the license application to the CCC. Once the CCC approves the license application, then NSAJO Holdings can submit an application to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit. Ms. McGoon presented a recreational marijuana HCA negotiated by Watertown's attorney, K.P. Law, and the attorney for NSAJO Holdings, which is Attachment B. The key points were, one, the current medical marijuana HCA with NSAJO Holdings dated July 12, 2017, will remain in effect for marijuana, medical marijuana sales with its 6% impact fee. The Department of Revenue, or DOR, tracks medical marijuana sales separately, which are not subject to the local option sales tax. Two, the proposed HCA has a community impact fee of 3%, the maximum allowed by law, and the recreational sales will be subject to 3% local option sales tax to be collected by DOR. Three, the proposed HCA has a term of five years, at which point it will be renegotiated. Counsel Pichorelli stated that Counselor Canelis is not able to attend, but she asked if the facility could have limits on the hours of operation or be by appointment only. Ms. McGoon stated these matters would be addressed by the ZBA as part of the special permit. The NSAJO Holdings team stated the hours they plan to open are 8 to 8 daily, except Sundays, will be 10 to 6. They also stated that by the time they get approval to open, it will probably be September 2020 and about eight other stores will be open in surrounding communities, eliminating the crush of customers seen in Brookline. There are no comments from the public. The action item, Counsel Pichorelli made a motion, seconded by Counsel Feltner, to recommend the town council authorize the town manager to execute the host community agreement as presented for NSAJO Holdings Incorporated to operate a recreational marijuana establishment at 23 Elm Street. Voted unanimously, the meeting adjourned at 7:44 PM, before prepared by Counsel Pichorelli.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to accept the report? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Counselor, Attorney Rich.
Thank you, Mr. President. I apologize for jumping in this moment. I just wanted to make one comment on the report. The report indicates that the proposed HCA has a term of five years, at which point it will be renegotiated. I think just for clarification, the HCA itself will remain in effect for the entire time that the business is in operation. It's the host community fee that is subject to a five-year renegotiation period. Just wanted to provide that clarification.
Thank you for clarifying. Comments on the report? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Can I get a motion that the council authorize the town manager to execute the host community agreement as presented for the NSAJO Holdings, Inc., to operate a recreational marijuana retail establishment at 23 Elm Street? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Counselor Canelis.
Thank you. Many of you may be aware of this ongoing issue since 2017 and I vocally spoke against establishment of the medical marijuana facility at 23 Elm Street. I also have spoken against the recreational marijuana facility at the same location. We know that Watertown will have three recreational marijuana establishments at some point in time, but I strongly feel that 23 Elm Street is not the appropriate location. And as Mr. Peter Orasian spoke earlier during public forum, this particular location has not even been tested yet as to how it's going to work with our community, within our community for the medicinal marijuana dispensary status. So, I strongly oppose the establishment of recreational marijuana at 23 Elm Street. It's an isolated area. It's in the rear of the particular location. It abuts residential properties very closely. There is a very active retail establishment within feet. The parking is very minimal. We were told that the onsite parking spaces would be adequate. We don't know that. Whether the facility opens a year from now and whether there are going to be other locations in the area, we don't know how the Watertown location will function. We are very close to Brighton, Alston, and many of the universities in the area. It's a high-traffic area. I know that vehicles will not be able to park at the Watertown Mall location. Will they be parking on our neighborhood streets? Will they be parking on Elm Street where parking is not permissible? What's going to happen with the litter? What's going to happen with folks who are traversing the area? I think it's a very inappropriate location. My colleagues have voted for this previously and I've been the lone dissenting vote and I will continue to be this evening. Thank you.
Any other comments? Counselor Donato.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm sure when this topic comes up, I occasionally sound like a broken record, but I do just want to remind the folks in this room and maybe at home who aren't familiar with this that because the recreational marijuana ballot initiative was overwhelmingly passed in Watertown, we as a town council cannot prohibit the sales of recreational marijuana in town. So, I just want to remind everybody about that. With regard to this particular site, I think it would obviously be better if there was a track record at the site so we could see how recreational would unfold. I would say that having attended a lot of the meetings where the petitioner has been present, I think that they have a lot to lose and they have a very vested interest in making sure this location succeeds and I do believe that they will be responsive to neighborhood and town concerns going forward, so I will be supporting this this evening.
Are there any other comments? Can I get a roll call, please?
Counsel Pichorelli?
Yes.
Counsel Woodland?
Yes.
Counsel Baze?
Yes.
Counselor Donato?
Yes.
Counselor Felkoff?
Yes.
Counselor Feltner?
Yes.
Counselor Canelis?
No.
Counselor Palumbo?
Yes.
President Sedaris?
Yes, thank you. Next item is a committee on economic development and planning report regarding the proposed adjustments to the town's transportation demand management regulations. Counselor Woodland.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee convened on Wednesday, September 25, 2019, at 5:00 PM in the Lewis P. Andrews Upper Conference Room. President and myself, Chair Lisa Felton, Vice Chair and Vincent Pichorelli, Secretary, Staff President was Laura Weiner, Senior Transportation Planner, also President was President Mark Peterson. Purpose of the meeting was, one, to conduct interviews for the ZBA, two, to consider staff-proposed adjustments to the town's TDM, or Transportation Demand Management Regulations. This report covers only the discussion of the TDM regulations, which occurred from 5 to 6, and the interviews were conducted from 6 to 7 and were covered in a previous report. Ms. Weiner distributed a revised version of the TDM regulations, which are found in Attachment A, and a redlined version so the committee could see track changes, which is Attachment B. She stated the reason the department is requesting the changes, to make the regulations more user-friendly and reflect the real-world experience of using them for the past year. Most changes are organizational and she highlighted key changes of substance. One, self-storage change to reflect the number of employees, not the total square footage of the building, which may be large but have relatively few employees. The points table was simplified to eliminate things which were hard to measure and incentivized joining the Watertown TMA. And there's a handout with changes to the ranking points showing what they originally were and what is now proposed, which is Attachment C. And three, monitoring moved from 18 months of certificate of occupancy to 12 months so the town can begin to get that sooner. Action item, Counsel Pichorelli made a motion, seconded by Counsel Feltner, to recommend the town council endorse the revised regulations as presented with Table 1-1, Bullet 7, revised to match Section 6.2.1. That was voted 3 to 0. The meeting adjourned at 6:54 PM, before prepared by Counsel Pichorelli.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to accept the report? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Counselor Felton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I encourage people to look at the chart and the changes and we felt the meeting was really productive and were very heartened by the suggestions that Laura Weiner and Steve McGoon suggested, so it's definitely an improvement. Thank you.
Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The action item, can I get a motion that the council endorse the revised regulations as presented? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Counselor Baze?
I did have a question about, on page six, at number seven, the ongoing monitoring and reporting statement. It says, "Within 12 months of full occupancy, the property owner is required to submit a monitoring and reporting form." What is full occupancy?
I'm going to recognize Steve.
Okay.
It's okay. We're sharing the microphone down here. Thank you, Mr. President, for you. So, the 12 months of full occupancy would be the issuance of a full occupancy permit for the property. It's not that it's occupied 100%. It's just that they've got the permits for that. Yep.
Are there any other comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. 9C is the committee on public works report regarding a policy for naming squares or intersections for non-veterans. Counselor Pichorelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee on public works met Tuesday, September 3. President and myself, Chair Counsel Palumbo, Vice Chair and Counsel Woodland, Secretary. Staff President was DPW Superintendent Gerald Me, also President was David Stokes. The purpose of the meeting was to consider a policy for naming squares or intersections for non-veterans. I began the meeting by distributing similar policies from surrounding communities, which is Attachment A. The committee discussed some of the pros and cons of the various provisions and agreed that the sample from Belmont seemed the best fit for Watertown, both for its simplicity and effective language. Highlights included a caution in exercising such a policy as the priorities of future generations may be different. The criteria the town council would use in evaluating potential naming, the council's vetting process, the appropriateness of the location, how future construction or planning needs affect the location, whether or not, if named for an individual, whether the individual needs to be deceased or not, and how much community support is needed as a prerequisite. Counsel Pichorelli was tasked with incorporating the discussion into a new draft policy to be considered at a future committee meeting. The committee met again on Wednesday, September 25. The purpose of the meeting was to review interviews of conservation provisions as well as continued discussions on this policy. I presented a draft of a policy for naming squares or intersections after non-veterans, incorporating considerations and recommendations from the prior meeting. The DPW reviewed the draft and was satisfied that their concerns were addressed. The committee discussed the merits of the draft and highlighted the straightforward process, the role of the committee in the process, and the pros and cons of how a submission with broad support would be made. Counsel Palumbo made a motion, seconded by Counsel Woodland, to recommend the town council adopt the naming policy for squares or intersections for non-veterans as presented. Counsel Pichorelli stated the policy would be put in the form of a resolution for the council to vote on. This report was prepared by Counsel Woodland. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to accept the report? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on the report? Counselor Felton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Perhaps the Chair remind me the discussion around pros and cons of naming before someone's deceased or not?
Sure. We had, the committee had... We can do that on the motion part of it.
I'm sorry.
This is just for the report.
Sorry.
Are there any questions or comments on the report itself? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Can I get a motion?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we adopt the resolution for naming policies, of a naming policy for squares or intersections for non-veterans as attached to the report.
Is there a second?
Second.
Now Counsel Felton.
Thank you. If the Chair would indulge me in sharing briefly the pros and cons of naming before someone is deceased. someone is deceased.
So the committee did discuss that, and we felt that, we decided that, you know, it would be really up to the council to decide in each, in specific incident of naming that, whether that was appropriate or not. I would just say, sort of a broad thing, is we tried to make this as simple as possible and give the council as much leeway as possible for making decisions, as opposed to being very specific, because we didn't, could not anticipate all the specific conditions that may come forward in the future, and we felt it was better that the, the council have the flexibility to, to make that, this council or any future council have that flexibility to make a decision in the future. So, so ultimately, we ended up not including the requirement that the named person be deceased.
Thank you. I appreciate the simplified process, and thank you for providing all the other communities' materials as well.
Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Excuse me. New business. Take over.
Okay. Any new business? Seeing none. Next agenda item is communications from the town manager. I'll recognize Mr. McGoon.
Thank you. At the risk of disappointing the council, I, I have no items under.
All right.
Okay. Very good. So the, moving on to the next item is a request for information or a review of the list of pending matters. Any requests for information? On a roll here. So no, nothing there. The next item is announcements. Are there any announcements? On this side, Counselor Felkoff.
I believe before our next meeting, there will be a town election, so everyone is encouraged to vote on November fifth for school committee, library trustees, and town council.
Thank you. Counselor Palumbo.
I just want to announce that on Sunday, November third, from two to four, at the Watertown Free Public Library, in the Watertown Savings Bank Room, there'll be a program called composting, why and how, composting methods and strategies, curbside pickup, community drop-off, and commercial services will be discussed, as well as yard waste recycling. We have a, a number of presenters. There'll be someone from DPW there. There'll be someone from Wellesley. And Counselor Baze will be presenting information about the programming in, in Cambridge. We also have a PowerPoint presentation about the methods of, and strategies of composting. Please remember that it is daylight savings time, so that you, if you don't move your clocks back, you'll show up late, or early. I'm not sure which yet, but, but move your clocks back and.
Fall back.
Fall back. And again, that would be this, not this Sunday, next Sunday, November third, from two to four, at the library.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? Counselor Felton.
Are you going to announce me to?
No, I was, go ahead.
Okay. So tomorrow night, Wednesday, at seven P.M. at the Watertown Middle School, looks to be a, a fun, engaging evening. The Media and Public Outreach Committee with Watertown Community Conversations will be sharing information from our summer projects, and public's invited, whether you attended the kitchen table conversations or not, so that refreshments at six forty-five and seven P.M. will start the program, the Watertown Middle School. And I also wanted to let people know that from ten to three is a craft fair and bake sale on Saturday at the shut detachment.
Okay. Counselor Baze, did you have?
We were discussing who was going to do that, but I did have one, and I can't find it. It's the Public Art Forum. It's on the thirty, it's on the thirtieth.
The Public Art Forum is on October thirtieth at, at the middle school at six forty, six thirty.
Six to eight thirty.
Six to eight thirty.
Six to eight thirty.
Six to eight thirty. We all did it.
So there was, Bob Epstein came at the last council meeting and gave a little presentation on that, so, so come to that. So I'm going to come to Counselor Palumbo, then back to Counselor.
Mine is not an announcement, I mean, not an event, but I wanted to, Counselor Donato mentioned this a couple of meetings ago, but I want to reiterate it, that every citizen in Watertown can get a free ticket to one of the six plays, any one of the six plays that are being offered by the new rep. All you have to do is call the box office, and this is an, in recognition of their thirty-fifth opening. So again, free ticket to any of the plays. I think there's five left that you could choose from by the new rep.
Counselor Felton.
Thank you. And unfortunately, the, the calendar is so tight, so I know it's the same evening as the Public Art Forum. However, we've scheduled it to not start till seven thirty is the community meeting for eighty-five Walnut Street, the formal, former Dobell redevelopment site, so community's invited to come to third floor, eighty-five Walnut Street, seven thirty, to see a lot more detail about their proposal and how they're responding to initial questions and concerns about that site. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And so any more announcements? Not, Mr. McGoon?
Just one, a quick one. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Little Monster Mash is going to be at the Commander's Mansion this Saturday from five thirty to eight.
Okay, so wear your costumes to that. Okay, so no more announcements onto public forum? Does anyone from the public like to speak at the second public forum? Seeing none? Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.